Call this the order or you start. You're the man today, you're the facilitator.
I don't have authority. Don't have authority to start it.
Okay, all right, under the authority vested me as mayor, I now share that authority with the county ma- the county manager who's gonna facilitate this here gathering. No, seriously, Warren, go ahead, you've got the agenda out there.
All right, basically today, most of this is gonna be discussion purposes only for, but there's some issues that we want to talk about to sort of get it squared away for. Projects we've got in the works and some priorities, what we may want to look at in the budget process. I've got budget number eight on here, but a lot of these things we may talk about are things that we need to be thinking about as we get into the budget process. And obviously, I came in April last year, so we didn't have a lot of time to sit down together to put a complete plan together before July. We did a very good budget, but we didn't have time to do a lot of these between then, the time I came when it was due. So, a couple of things, the first thing I'll start off with today, we have been working on discussions of what to do at the gazebo, and there's a couple of things we still need to work out. We have not finalized the lease with Macon County yet on extending the lease. So that's something that we certainly need to finalize, and I was gonna talk to Derek yesterday to see where that was at in the process. We've submitted it for an agenda item, actually back before Christmas, so I need to follow up on that and find out where it's at in the process. But, we have had developed some preliminary designs for what we think might work for the gazebo. And I've got two presentation drawings and I've got some individual packets, so I will hold this up and then I'll, Summer, will you help me? Everybody gets one. This probably should be enough for the media, and everybody gets one of these, and I have some extra small ones. Essentially, what we looked at was, we met with some of the stakeholders, tried to figure out what we could do financially with the money we budgeted. We budgeted $5,000 this past year in a budget to make some renovations. The design you see was designed to match the layout of Main Street. We didn't wanna, we obviously don't wanna metal buildings, we want something that matches the decor of Main Street that blends in to the rest of Main Street. One of the big expenses with this project would have been the tearing out and the removal of the old fountain and the concrete. This particular design saves the fountain, the structure, the concrete, the brick, the oval structure that's there, and the old gazebo goes away, this goes back in its place on top, and then we add a section to the rear. This is actually a floor plan, there's some floor plans in your package here. The floor plan actually includes space for some storage area for equipment up there, so we don't have to move stuff back and forth, picture of sound systems, tables and chairs. It also includes provisions for two restrooms. Now, we have a couple of options for those, I mean, we can do it in phases, we could build the structure proper itself and not complete the restrooms this year, depending on the money label, maybe do that next year. There's a couple of engineering difficulties with the restroom facilities, that there is obviously sewer water there, but making sure the elevations, once you all are okay with a design, making sure where the elevation's gonna be correct for getting into the sewer system and access to water, and to figure out where the best tap location's gonna be. And then there's also some issues of heating that in the wintertime, or having some type of system where you can basically close it in the wintertime so you don't have freezing problems, and then there's some period issues with that. We'll probably wanna do a timed lock or something on the doors, so they lock at 10 and open at 7, so that you don't have people in and out of there in the middle of the night that shouldn't be there. We wanna make them available to the public if we do that, but we want it to be secure as well. However, once you get the basic infrastructure done, and if you're gonna go ahead and build the walls in place and you can finish the restrooms later, there's probably not a lot of expense left in finishing those. So, a couple of things you all can look at, look at the design, look at the floor plan, and here's the big floor plan, there should be a copy in that package if I don't remember correctly. And basically, we just need to, we need to discuss that over a period of time, get some input from the folks that are actually gonna use that facility, see what they think about it. There's elevations, right and left side elevations in the black copies there. You'll notice we integrated some things in there, but there's a couple of minor differences. This particular drawing, one of the issues we looked at was the cupola on top. I didn't necessarily like the height of this one, I liked it, I wanted it to be a little bit lower, and you'll notice on the big drawings, it's actually a little lower. And you'll notice on the, oh, the gables of the structure, there are interchangeable places for patterns like quilt trail. We started off with a design for like the quilt trail, but those will be interchangeable with different designs, depending on what we wanted to put up there. Plus, on the backside of the structure, and in the, it would be shown best probably on the, probably seen best from the right side elevation, or to the rear of the structure there where the restrooms are. We wanna be sure block those from the businesses that actually are access there off of that sidewalk. We also thought that that would be a good place if we wanted to do some type of an information board, a notice board, so you put your schedule picking on a square, and we could do something artistic or informational on that particular area out there. And then, the other positive to this, and we can go back and completely redraw and retool and take the whole thing out and start from the ground up if we wanted to, but this causes probably the least disruption of the grounds. It will be the quickest solution to get rid of the old gazebo, put a new structure up that essentially is a little bit more covered square footage than what we have now, that the covered square footage would cover what's currently under the gazebo and the tent that we always put up in front. I guess at this point, Mr. Mayor, that you all can look at it, consider it, I need to get it out to the public, I need to make sure that we get it out to the stakeholders, whether it is the February meeting, or probably no later than the March meeting. I would love to have some input from you all as to what you think about the design, whether you like it, whether you hate it, whether you wanna see something different, and then let's start over, but if we're gonna make the season this year, I'm picking on a square, we need to make some decisions, February, March at least, no later than March. Or we can keep trucking on and work out something later in the season.
Warren, do we have anything like a testing, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3?
The, we spec-
More than $5,000.
We specifically instructed the draftman to design a structure that he thought would fall under the $50,000, not including the restrooms. Now, once we add in the plumbing, the pipe, the stuff for the restrooms, we will probably be open. However, you have the option, if you feel like that's a necessity, we obviously have some contingency money, which I'm not advocating, we spend a lot of it, we need to keep that, but depending on how you wanna go with the process, we could probably do the shell structure for the 50, put some more money into it to do the restrooms, or we can budget some more money July 1st, in next year's budget, to do Phase 2, which would be the restrooms. But we think, what you're calling Phase 1, we can shell it out, get the basic structure up there the way it is, the way it's drawn, without the restrooms, at least for $50,000 from now on.
What about ADA and wheelchair access to that up there? Do we need wheelchair ramp or anything, or is that the moment?
Once we, once you are okay with the basic design, we'll turn it over to an architect person that will make sure we're compliant with codes, so we have a plan to get the code enforcement, but we're basically not changing any of the slope on elevations, anything from the side, but it is designed to be ADA compliant.
I really like the idea of utilizing what's there, because you need to have presenters and presentations and stuff there. I like it myself, it looks almost like a little conceptual design I did on it about three years ago.
No wonder.
That's what I'd like.
How much did you think? I do like the smaller stube.
Yeah, I do too.
I agree.
I agree with you, George, on that, I don't agree with nothing real.
I think we really have to have bathrooms.
Oh, yeah.
This is so awkward.
Well, the county's got them.
But half the time, one is always broken, almost every time.
Well, that would, that would give us bath, because we've got bathrooms down here that are open part of, most part of the weeks, and that would give us some bathrooms down there for all the little different students. So I think we always, when we said we was gonna do this, we would need bathrooms in there for no more, not so much the gazebo, just for the public.
And we-
People who don't know that we have found open for the bathrooms, yeah.
That's a small town, and you tell them, oh, if you go down a block.
One of the things we have done, George, to, I guess to bounce off that, we did put some signage up on the middle of Main Street so the folks know that those restrooms are at the town hall. The other thing we looked at with this, probably half the expense of this, had we torn it out, would have been the removal of the concrete, the replacement of the concrete structure, plus landscaping issues, if you tear up the landscape, and you've got to come back and put the landscaping back. And then we have, there's some commemorative bricks that are actually in the fountain itself that we certainly want to preserve, then we've got to figure out what we're gonna do with those and incorporate them. So, this was, this was the least complicated option we could come up with, but we are certainly open to suggestions.
I really like the idea of the quilt.
Yeah, each item with a quilt.
My suggestion will be that I will take those presentation drawings, and I will make those available upstairs in the lobby or out front for folks, and we'll push it to the webpage next week. I will be in contact with the different stakeholders groups and get input from them, and I'm sure once we decide how soon we wanna get it back on the agenda for you all to actually discuss, we will have some type of public input.
I have just one question, is there anything that can be done to alleviate the noise? Because that's the biggest problem, I think, now, especially someone speaking.
That, I think, is our next budget priority, if, and that may be what you all want to prioritize when it comes to your budget. We have had estimates-
Sound systems.
Unofficial estimates up to $20,000 for a sound system, or a design to fix the sound-
Firms or tools.
You may wanna decide that, you know, we have restrooms, you wanna put money into the sound system.
Are you talking about traffic making so much noise?
Yeah.
And I don't know how you could stop, some of them deliberately want attention and step on their glass and make-
But I mean, if there's some way that you could, you know, buffer it, I don't understand, I don't know either, I'm not a sound engineer, but I know that's one of the biggest obstacles that people face.
Yeah, to really buffer it, there from the city you're gonna take away, you're not even gonna be able to see the gazebo when you drive through.
Right.
To properly buffer it.
It's a good problem for some designer.
We could tear the courthouse down.
Well, if the courthouse doesn't-
They'd bust off of that wall.
If the courthouse doesn't get forward with the roof. I don't know why they-
I bet we all wish we had the old one back now.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I might get this information up, we started to.
When does the next county meeting, do we all need to show up to the county meeting and ask?
Well, no, they need to put it on the agenda, they've told us.
That's kind of silly.
At least February, they've-
It's silly, they don't have any use for it, I mean-
They have one Tuesday, but we can't, we're already-
They utilize it. They use this?
Warren, one thing-
Yeah, yeah.
Some of-
They utilize our gazebo too for their things.
I was somewhere in the last week or so where they talked about, there are these restrooms now that are pre-built, they're indestructible. We looked at, was that Ellen? Ellen, okay, Ellen told us about it, and they can be, they're put in place basically with, they come on a flatbed truck, and they're built to prison standards, to where you cannot destroy them. And I was just wondering if we might look into that and have them a little more off-site than at the back of the gazebo. Those things were built like a tank, and they're very similar to what the Forest Service has put in at Hurricane Creek and Warrimaw. They're already built, they come in, and they just set them in place, and you hook them up.
Are they real pretty?
It's a septic tank, just stuck under there, that has to be hooked and-
No, no, that's not, that's up in the Forest Service, but these are hooked into your system, you sit, they're made for tanks, yeah, and they're made like parks and things of that nature, they're really neat. I'll get some information from them about that.
Yeah, I'd like, it's only when they can just insert them into the building, because I don't like the sound of them being separate.
Really?
No, I think one of the fun-
A lot of people don't want it.
Yeah, I mean, so start taking the part and put potties up here.
But people do not like porta-johns.
No, no. We only like them if we have to add them.
Children like them.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. They can be shooters.
Bitch on the pro.
Okay.
All right, any more questions on that? Obviously, we've got a lot of discussions, discussing to do, but any other questions I can answer on that?
Sounds good to me.
Can we put together, we, can, once, once we kinda get this out, we probably need to put together a timeline of what needs to be done, at what point we're, we start getting some backlash from the county or something, we start pushing on.
And I mean, to me, the sooner the better, we've always seen how people want to have that function right now.
How about if we set a deadline that, we will put it on the agenda for the February meeting for discussion. If we're ready for design, okay, design at that point, then we can move on, if not, then we'll, at that point, we'll finalize some more details.
Does the county ever also could put any money into this?
Not official, no.
How about unofficial? Or should-
Not official, it didn't have.
I'm just wondering, they get as much use out of it as the town does.
I certainly don't mind to tell them what our plans are, say, hey, what could you do?
Let's just ask them, yeah.
Tell them to give us about height and what they give Highlands for recreation.
Well, that's an idea, I'll send you up there to do that.
Warren, any other questions on that?
I have people running for election, they're gonna be ready to help us out.
That's right, that's right.
All right, Main Street parking, obviously, you all received this particular document, the previous board did, back November, December, about the parking studies that DOT did on Main Street to look at option parallel parking. It wasn't received very well, most folks don't look for parallel parking. So what I did was, I contracted with another firm out of Langsville that does traffic engineering studies. They are probably about two weeks away from finishing a different product for us, and essentially, with DOT, you either get angled the way it is, or you get parallel. And this firm actually has went to the businesses on Main Street, they've looked at traffic counts, they've looked at other options, and they're going to present a study to us to say, here are your other options, which will either may include reangling the parking, which DOT did not consider, it may include a combination of parallel and angles. They are attempting to get rent for a bike lane on Main Street, which would widen the I don't know yet exactly where we're going with that. The one priority that I did ask them, they asked me a couple of questions, and they asked me what was my biggest concern. My biggest concern, I told them, was to make sure that we didn't do anything to hinder business on Main Street. We wanna make sure that we facilitate business on Main Street. Whatever you do, even if that means telling us we have to stay with the way we are, that was our problem. So, basically, just to inform you that you will have some other options to consider. It may include bump outs, it may include the reangling, different options, some things for you to consider, and if there's a good possibility, we'll have that in February, but definitely, if not February, by March, so you will have some other options to look at.
Phil was saying the other day, if he doesn't really get in touch with that, then he was talking to somebody from Silver, and they said they do not shop in Silver anywhere, they live in Silver and do not, because they cannot park, and they won't go, they will not go and do that. Now, my biggest thing is if we could get rid of the thing that'll pump in trucks, and have to step things them to the back somewhere, I know it's gonna upset some people, but that, you know, you have to weave sometimes, you know.
I came through the other day, and there was a short bedded truck, and it stopped about 60 yards from the curb, and they were standing out 2 feet farther than the longest truck on there was, so a lot of it's just been parked there. Well, just, when you see that, go up to the tram and say, you can walk to the curb from here.
And if your car is further than that line, you get a ticket.
We don't have print on the force anymore, so we don't give the tickets.
I wondered if that might be approved by DOT, because it's 300 foot. Ask Gary Gilz, he's there.
I've always felt like, you know, rather than parallel parking is just reangle those, you know, if people park in correctly, if you reangle them a little bit, it'd give you more room.
Yes, and it's hard to see the way they're angled now.
You can't all back out, it's almost as difficult to back out, you need to move this out of here.
It's horrible out here in the front of the building.
I know it.
You can't see down the hill and it's clear.
I'll park, I'll take, if I'm gonna stop there, I'll take the first parking lot next to the fire hydrant there, because that way I can look and see when I get out.
People don't wanna stop for you, you know.
I know.
Oh, no, heaven forbid they would stop.
Well, hopefully, we will have some other options to present to you very soon this spring, that should be in there. Any questions on that? Water treatment facility, obviously, you all received some documentation on that slackball about a proposal from W.K. Dixon, where we thought we needed to build a water treatment facility in the next 10 to 20 years. It came with a rather hefty price tag, which was 20 plus million dollars if we followed through with it. I personally do not feel that the town of Franklin can financially afford that. I think there needs to be another fiscally responsible way for us to make that happen. So, I have also went back to the engineering firm and had them come back and take another look at our system and see if there are some other options that perhaps we can do a phased-in approach, or even some newer technologies out there that might help us. By July, actually, by May, hopefully, in time for our actual budget process, there will be two things that will hopefully happen. We will have a financial analysis done of our sewer and water enterprise budget, particularly our water budget, that will take a look at revenue, take a look at expenditures, look at our debt service, look at rates for, we currently have on water, look at rates that we may need to have in the future, and give us some, a little, I guess, a third-party look at our rate structure and where we're at financially. That will be tied with a, another study that will show a phased approach to a water treatment facility upgrade. We have, the staff has toured a couple of what's known as package plants, they are drop-in, usually a set gallon each, either a million, then a half, too many gallons, 800, 1,000 gallons a day. Facilities that you drop in, hook up, and they process water. It's not that easy, but it's easier than starting from scratch. The life expectancy on those is less than a traditional plant, obviously, the traditional plant we have now has been there for longer than I can even tell you.
Sixteen?
A package, a package plant will not last that long, however, the expense of those is less, and the ability to put a package plant in, and then when it can't be refurbished anymore, to take it out and put another one back in its place is fairly easy. There's a good chance, if we do this, we could do the upgrades and the phased approach, perhaps do, drop a couple of package plants in after remodeling the facilities we have now, and leave room, as our capacity grows, to drop another, maybe you're dropping another million gallon package in beside each other in series to bump our capacity up without biting off a chunk of debt that we don't necessarily wanna service right now for 30 years down the road. We also went and looked at some new technology as far as the filtration, there's some new technology out there, particularly something called clarcom, clarification comb, that, I'm certainly no water expert, but it has to do with the process of the water before it gets into the plant, which makes it easier for the plant to process. We have very clean water, we have water out there that, if you all have not, for the new folks, if you have it in your water plant, go out there sometime and look at intake out there, when you can see the rainbow trout swimming by the intake, you know that's pretty clean water. But, anything we can do to make that easier, then it's certainly a positive for us. So, hopefully, what I, what I hope to happen is to have an alternate design back in place for you to consider April or May, to give me some direction on what to do in our budget process that has to be in place by July, so that if we wanna look at a phased-in approach, we can start the preliminary work in July. We've already, you're already doing preliminary work, because that's what these folks are doing now, they're, they're in the process, they're going through it, seeing where options are. But once we decide on a design, if we think it's something we can live with, then starting in July, we can start the engineering process on designing this thing and actually get it in the works and be prepared to do something either in, I guess that would be 2016. More stuff for you to process this spring when we get the documentation back.
Warren, now, W.K. Dixon was the one that came up with the plan, it was the $20 million plan. Who's doing this over?
McGee.
McGee.
And I realize we have used those folks before, sometimes with varying, sometimes with varying results. The one thing I do like about using them is they are intimately familiar with the system we have now, so they know what we're starting, because they designed most of it, right or wrong, they designed most of it. It will at least give us that second opinion, and they may go through this, and they may come back and say, you know what, we looked at it, they're right, it's gotta be this.
Who's doing it? I mean, with, with you.
Mike Warsack and Mike Dowder, the two main folks.
Just to think about things, the future stuff, there are other options that you can look at also with, I ran into, lived in municipalities, I ran into contractors, I've got some information on them, but they actually go into cities and counties and build water treatment plants for them, and then it's like a rent-to-own type thing, over so many years, you actually end up owning the actions, so if they come in there and design it for you, you end up getting operational, well, actually, if you wanted to then operate it for you too.
And don't, and by no means, don't take me wrong, that we have to push, 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 but we're not out of water, we have water, we're processing water every day, and we have excess.
Especially this year.
Right now, we're good, but I would be failing at my job if I didn't keep telling you that we need to, we need to start the planning process, we've gotta get through the planning process, because we don't wanna pop up five years from now and say, oh, we're out of water, we gotta have it tomorrow.
Did we ever receive anybody in the county on what their estimates need to be over the next 20 years? As soon as we do something, they're all, they're all sudden, they're gonna pop up to, we'd like to get water out of these areas.
It's gonna be too late.
I know it, I know it, and they've been told, so they know what's, what is coming, so.
You know, and we actually presented, Derek had worked on the plan before he left with the, what we called our growth zone, where we thought water either should be or already is. Those numbers coincided pretty much 100% percent as far as capacity with Dixon's numbers based on population. You all considered it, we never really officially adopted it, if that's something you want me to bring back and you all look at it again, we'll certainly do that, and that way you can take it, you can say officially, this is where we think it needs to be.
I think we need to do that, I do too.
Well, I will, how about if we put that back on the agenda for February, then at that point, I'll have something to officially take into account, and you all say, okay, we think in 30 years, here's how much water we need, these areas, this is it. And at that point, once you all say, this is it, then I can take it to them and say, this is it.
My feeling is, we can't afford not to do that, if we need to move on.
And at that point, if they disagree, then they need to talk to us, and we need to come together and work out some- together and work out some. There is an improvement project that D.O.T. has in place for the town bridge, the remaining section down here that's not new. There are some issues that have arisen about that, and you're gonna ask me when the completion date's gonna be on this project. I can't exactly tell you. We, we think construction will start in late two thousand and fourteen, hopefully, and maybe complete in fifteen or sixteen. That's all subject to D.O.T.'s funding. It may be sooner.
Or is that gonna be a mess?
It may be sooner, it may be later. And when I say complete, I don't think it's gonna take three years to build it. I, I just don't know where, once they get through their studies, tear the bridge out, drop the bridge in. It shouldn't be that long, but, but I don't know where they're gonna be with funding that. However, there have been some issues that have been presented to us. The, the bridge currently has a roughly a five-foot sidewalk on the side, and then you have two travel. The D.O.T. is part of a, they've adopted a complete streets initiative. They, they have endorsed multimodal transportation, which is pedestrian and bike traffic. The last projects that I brought back to you, maybe in January, that we had presented to D.O.T., the only things they would consider were pedestrian projects and bike projects. There are essentially two options for this bridge. They will put in a, pretty much a sidewalk the way it is with, with a rail between the, the sidewalk and travel traffic. Or the option was to put a wider bike lane and usually biker pedestrian lane, which is either ten to eleven feet wide with no rail. And essentially, you have two travel lanes and then a wide ten-foot lane for bike traffic. If we want to put a rail between the, the travel lanes and that pedestrian and bike lane, then D.O.T. has asked what the town would consider about funding that. I will tell you that originally, they didn't wanna fund the wide part of the bridge. They, they wanted us to pay about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to make the bridge wider, put the rail in. They have sentry candidate, and said they will, they will take the expense of the wider lane, but if the rail is included, then it will cost thirty-six thousand dollars for the rail. I have some, to, to sort of tell you what I'm talking about, it, it's hard to explain that unless you see the pictures, so I actually have some photos of what I wanna leave that a little of.
Where the county?
That's a concrete rail.
With the county chip in, that's the, this connects the greenway, which is county's?
It's possible. I, I don't know what their feeling is at this particular moment on the funding. And, and I guess this is where I kinda need some direction from you all. There are supposed to be some public input processes that will occur very quickly about this, to get input from the public. D.O.T. obviously has endorsed multimodal transportation. They've adopted complete streets. They have pushed pedestrian and bike traffic. The, you all have identified through various documents, the, the importance of pedestrian traffic through there in, in the comprehensive transportation plan. You have identified it both in the bike section and the pedestrian section a, as an area that needs improvement. So, you, you have documentation that you have submitted this and said, we, we think it needs to be fixed. In the master streets plan that you have, you have identified it as an area that needs improvement. You, you have all the documentation, because when you go to D.O.T., you have to tell them, you know, we've done this plan, we've looked at it, we've identified these problem areas, please help us fix it. You, you have every identification possible to get to D.O.T. to say, please help us out with this. The one stipulation with D.O.T. adopting their complete streets plan is that they are, they, they are supposed to work with municipalities to, to go into the design process to get our input about what we want. It does not say that they can't pass that cost on to us. It doesn't say they'll pay for it all, it just says they get our input. Something for you all to consider is to be prepared in the very near future, when this public input process comes up, what do you want to see for that area? What, what do you wanna see? Do you, do you wanna, you know, is it, are we gonna try and put the money in it? Do we tell D.O.T. to buy the bill, put the money into it? Do we live with what they got? How do we do that? And, and I want, one word of caution, I will tell you all. Janice, correct me if I'm wrong, but that should not be a Powell Bill funded project. That's a D.O.T. project. I don't know that we can use Powell Bill money to pay for that, rather.
I don't, I don't think so, 'cause that's a D.O.T. street.
You, you would have to pull that money from general funds somewhere to pay for that.
You gotta pay those.
Something for you all to consider.
And like he says, a lot of times they have done projects and then they bill you later, the town share, that's happened a lot. Well, I mean, over the years, I mean, they don't, like you say, like he says, they don't always pay a hundred percent. They'll send you a bill and say, this is the town's portion, but usually you have to agree to pay it. But then you get billed after the project's finished.
So, you kept telling them, you know, you know.
Yeah, usually they finish the project and then they'll bill you, but usually I think the first step is, they'd want somebody to sign something saying, hey, we've already paid thirty thousand on this project or whatever.
The, the official email that I received that said in response from D.O.T., D.O.T. seems to be that they would consider a wider multi-use path on the bridge, which is perhaps ten or eleven feet, which meets the pedestrian bike lane guidelines, or a barrier, but not both. wider path would require no local match, but for the barrier option, they would want a local match of thirty-six thousand. So, if, you know, if we split it, our half will be eighteen thousand, if the county be willing to do that, so. Something to think about, something for you to discuss amongst each other and figure out what you think the, the town wants to have in, in the works for that.
If you don't put a barrier there, they'll be driving on it.
Definitely.
Especially with eleven feet wide.
If we've got everything in place, dead gum, I can't see, you know, we pay, pay those taxes too, and I can't see them asking us for contribution on that.
And, and I have no issue with going back to D.O.T. and saying, you know, the town board's pretty adamant that we have told you.
Years, years ago.
Various, various places that this is an issue. You have told us you, you want to do multimodal transportation. Your, your policies are to direct your projects toward that.
And I think it's a safety issue.
I think it came up when that greenway was built. Who's liable if someone's hip that's walking in the path? Us or the D.O.T.?
The, that's a complete D.O.T. project, so it would be them.
I would think they want to protect themselves.
Well, we need to get the, uh...
I don't think you can sue the state unless they're involved in this gentleman. I think they have to give you permission. I mean, I'm serious.
I don't know, I just, um... Not real hip about putting in thirty-six thousand dollars worth of town money on this one.
You know, bicycles and, you know, pedestrian traffic, the, the kind of people that use the greenway, that's, that's an economic development side. I know that makes them want to like you.
How, how, just out of my curiosity, what are they gonna do, route traffic across the new section and one lane both ways? We're gonna have that off, backup that we used to have?
I do not know that.
They're gonna helicopter cars across the bridge?
We might do it in the river.
Coming the other way, coming around the other way.
Bury people at home?
First plan, because we're supposed to have actually started last July, nine, four, five years back, and that, we had a time period in there that you wanted to go two-way traffic on the, on the new bridge, on the Edson Bridge.
And that's what we had to do on the old bridge?
Yes.
And then go in this one?
Yes.
I, I do not, I, I would anticipate the latest, but I, I do not.
Man, if there's nothing to do about it, I mean.
No.
Maybe somebody would pay thirty-six thousand dollars to have their name on the bridge. Like they had some British, then they could have it.
Well, it would be, I don't want to name the old bridge, but that would be a lot of takers.
Any other questions on that?
I'll pass, I don't need my name out there.
Thank you, Joyce, thank you.
The, uh, the street paving list. Obviously, last fall, we squeezed in some street paving. We did a conglomeration of areas, a gravel street that had never been paved, and we fixed a street that had been torn up terribly by utility construction. So, we, we tried to take the list that we developed last year with, with what we had seen were, were problems, and essentially shared the wealth and hit, hit the various areas, so we didn't really exclude any of them. Spring paving season will be upon us before we realize it, and I'd love to go ahead and tackle a couple of those this spring. We get about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars somewhere in that neighborhood from Powell Bill funds every year. We set aside money to take care of it, so we do have some funds budgeted. We, we certainly don't want to expend everything we have in all in one year, so we need to be cautious about where we pick and choose, but, but I think realistically, we can, we can tackle a few of those again this spring. You essentially have two options. We can, we ranked all the streets and have a, an overall ranking with them, worst to least, and it ends up being the American. There's no clear-cut winner, but you end up having groups that are, the highest group we're in right now are the one, one eights out of a scale, basically twos. You have four, five, six of those that, that rank really bad. Most of those are going to be busier through streets. So, I will give you, here, here are my options. If we go strictly by the overall number that we ranked and said, these are our worst ones, the next ones on the list would be Patton Avenue, White Oak Street, probably Derby Street, and Summit Drive. Those are your overall, they, they got a four on current condition, a, a four on usage.
Patton, White Oak, Summit, and what?
Derby Drive.
Derby Street. The most you can get's a five. We've already got the five, so now we're down to the fours. Or, you have the option of doing what we did last fall, and you spread it out amongst the, the different categories of streets.
I think that was good, too.
For instance, we do a, a very busy street, which would maybe be White Oak Street. We pick a, one that's, that has a current condition of, that's bad, one of the higher current conditions is bad, but the usage is not quite as much like a Wilke or Winston Street. We pick another street that, for instance, we, we've got some utilities work planned on, which is probably gonna be Doral Street or somewhere like that. And then we pick a, a street, a small residential street that doesn't have a lot of folks on it, for instance, maybe Roland Hills Drive or Wilson Avenue, and, and spread it out amongst the categories. And I guess what I'm asking from you all is some discussion on, how do you wanna take the ranking system? Do we wanna go strictly by numbers and hit everybody from worst to least? Or do we wanna spread it out between the categories and pick the worst in the busy category and the worst in the not busy category? And how, how do you wanna spread that out? Well, I guess what are your priorities?
I kinda liked the way you spread it out the last time. It kinda made a lot of different areas happy, you know? I mean, people who, like you say, have absolutely no traffic faculty, but have a street that's totally tore up and have to go over it every day, live there, I think one of them are just as needy, you know?
Well, and, and you mentioned Doral Street. If, I, I guess one thing that I think about is if, if we know of, of water or sewer project that we're gonna have to do on that street, it's basically gonna tear up everything.
Right.
I hate to just kinda halfway patch it back.
Patch it back.
And then say, say, y'all gonna have to live with our patching job till we get around to redoing this thing?
Right.
You almost feel an obligation to, if you're going there and you're gonna do this project, you're gonna get it done, you might as well.
Do it right.
Do it, you know, from one end to the other and get out of there. If, and I guess I'm saying that, if you really destroy the road, I mean, if you've gotta go up a hundred yards, right down the centerline of the road or something like that, if you just, you know, maybe cross the road or something, I can see not necessarily doing anything with that until the entire road conditions meet some criteria. But, but if you're really going in and you're gonna rip it from one end to the other, I think we might as well just do it while we're, so while we're there.
I agree.
And, and get out of there.
And then there is another one on our list, Green Street. We have torn up the upper end of Green Street. One of the things we're waiting on was trying to decide what we're gonna do with the lower end, which we, we're trying to figure out if we want to, to go down through the rest of the lower end of the street and finish that water line project on out to the bottom. We're not really having problems right now, but is it close enough in the priorities to go ahead and finish? So, that's, that's reason we kinda postponed the paving.
I wouldn't pave any of that armlet going down through there if I, if I had this in mind until the whole thing was done. The one thing that people comment about is, we go through, somebody goes through and paves the street, and the next week, somebody comes through and tears up a section of it. E, e, everybody in the world has to comment about that one time.
Might, might you fix it before?
Yeah. So, obviously, what I'm hearing is, is pay particular attention to the priorities on what's torn up greatly with utilities, and then tie back in different neighborhoods and different usages on what we have left to, to make that happen. With, with that being said, let me, let me update you on a couple of, of projects that tie back into the streets. We, I asked Jay this year, when he budgeted his money for sewer line and water line improvements, to prioritize them and tell me what the worst ones are. Obviously, we don't spend all our money in, in July because you may have issues that come up, and, and something that was a planned replacement might have to wait till next year because we had an emergency replacement we had to do this year. On the planned replacement list, the ones that, that should be next, the one he ranked the worst was Bidwell Street. Bidwell Street's number one, Gaston Street's number two, and Hay Circle's number three. So, those are the ones that we tentatively have planned next on the list to do. I believe both, all three of those are sewer line improvements, and we budgeted money for those this year. However, we've had some other issues come up. Doral Street has popped up on the, the radar with some sewer issues. It, it will be one of the ones that will be right down the middle of the street that will take the whole street, and so.
And it's not in the best issue.
It's on, it, it ranked that's it up there anyway, so that, that's probably gonna be one of the first ones we do, direct lines out, and then go back and pave the whole thing once the weather gets.
I think that needs to happen.
There's a lot of drainage problems coming out.
We've also had some, we're, we're, we're looking at the issue on Green Street, what we need to do with the water line on the lower end, do we need to go ahead and do that right now, or is that something that can wait another year or two? Maybe pave the upper half and don't do the lower half or something. And Grandview Court is also another one that we dealt with here recently that, that may be one we have to jump on. So, basically informing you that we've got some projects in the works. We will prioritize those based on whether we think they're an emergency that needs to be done now, or whether we go back to that prioritization list we developed in the budget process and work our way through those.
Just pause a second. If, if we go through with the utility project and we tear the street up, we can't use Powell Bill funds to, to patch it up?
No, unless you pave the whole street, then you can justify, not just patch or cross.
You have to pay folks.
If you just cross the street, that's kinda like, what a project.
Right, right. But if you can justify the whole.
Like you said, if you went down the whole street and it was already damaged and it would have been paved anyway, that would be prosal. But if you just cross over to make somebody a tap, no, you can't.
And then, for instance, Green Street, when we done Green Street, that was included in that project. We included all the patching in the project.
Right.
And now, fortunately, we have a, we have a list of, there are been questions about that. We can go back and say, okay, here's the conditions, and before, we, we certainly didn't help with any, but, but it's no worse now than what it was, so. Any other questions on that?
One question, well, I know we have no control over it, but is there any word on Wyatt Street? I get a call once a day on Wyatt Street, for a comment on how bad it's gonna be in those puddles this week.
So much traffic.
We, I know we have no control over it, but we also meet with the state and pretty much know what the state plans are.
Did, did we kinda mess up when we stopped that from being a truck route just because the priority of the state's paving?
I, I don't know. I don't know, actually, that question. I, I was wondering about that.
Yeah, 'cause they, you know, they would've, they would've, the, the priority would've been there if it would've been something.
That's a business.
Well, they changed their priority at, at, at a meeting on that, and they made that the number one priority.
I thought that's what it was.
They sure did.
And the, and the answer was that, once the, we, once we got this truck traffic off of there.
They was gonna do it.
You know, they were gonna do it. And that's the last that I heard, and that's why I told everybody and said, well, that's been six months now, what's the plan? I said, we haven't told you, no, but I...
So, the last thing I heard off the staff folks was they, they were, they were tentatively thinking spring, but now I think they've pushed it to fall of two thousand and fourteen, and it, it won't really consist of anything other than milling and asphalt back there.
But they will mill it. But they will mill it.
That was my understanding.
The property, um, as you go down on the right-hand side, you just tear the whole thing up. Widen it, put in new sidewalks, water lines, sewer lines and all at one time. Drainage, whole new drainage system, pour drainage on that street.
That is... I know the sidewalk issue did come up. The last conversation I had with their staff was that the sidewalks were going to be let as is, there was nothing. Now, I will tell you that one of the other things that we have done back in the fall, we had a company come in that does sidewalk modifications, I'm not sure the word I'm looking for. Essentially, what they did is they look at sidewalks, rather than tearing out sidewalks, doing new concrete, working on them. Have issues, for instance, like on Main Street. Wyatt Street was one we looked at, and we looked at the Bidwell Street, Harrison Avenue loop that folks walk back through town. They come in and they mill those sidewalks. If you have a section of sidewalk that's here, and a section of sidewalk that's here, they come in and they mill those so that they're ADA compliant. The price on doing that particular square footage wasn't much, it was about seven thousand somewhere in that neighborhood. The only reason we haven't pursued that is I have some concerns over the aesthetics of what they do. They essentially come in with a band saw, and they saw off the sidewalk. So, you'll have sidewalk that has aged here, then you will expose part of the concrete on the sidewalk up to the point where they stop sawing, which will may or may not show some of the aggregate in the concrete, depending on what it is. It'll be a different color, then you'll go back to the aged concrete on the old sidewalk. I had visions of what you all described as the snakes on Main Street, where they've patched the little things with the tar and the sand and stuff. So, I was a little skeptical about doing that, but obviously, if that's...
Better than tripping.
Well, and that's the other option, is at that point, we're in compliance. We brought those into ADA compliance, and you don't have the trip factor, so...
Would they not have the knowledge that they could add a color, be it a grayish something, and some kind of substance to that sidewalk to... I mean, they certainly know what the aging effect would look... To not have it just dark white or something, you know?
They sent me some information back that said that very quickly, that concrete will end up looking like the other just by the natural process. If that's something that you all want to pursue, that we can certainly look at. I was just a little... I remember Joe Collins describing this stuff on Main Street, and I had concerns that that might not be placed in the tree.
Let me say one thing about the sidewalk. I talked to the state some years ago about putting a sidewalk from the Church of God on West Palmer Street down to Palmer, Palmer Drive. And they were willing to do that, and they thought that was great. And Ryan Ledford said he'd give them an easement, no problem with that. But we came up with a stumbling block, because Mr. Benson didn't want to. So, but I think somehow, we ought to pursue that and see if we can get that easement. There's a little corner that belongs to the church, and I've been told we can do whatever way that we wanted to, as far as they's concerned, and the pastor is of ruling authority there. And so, I'd like to see that pursued as one of our goals, to do that.
And that ties back in directly to that project we submitted to DOT back in December. I can't remember when we actually submitted it, but that was the Western Loop that you all had put into this plan to tie that back in, so that's directly back involved with it.
See a lot of people walking there.
Dangerous, dangerous place, dark.
Where are we at? Whatever happened to the sidewalks on Depot Street that we had talked with DOT about putting those in?
That's tied... That's the other priority project that we put in back into that proposal back in November, December. There is one section there on the lower end of Depot that there are no easements for, that John and I have talked about the easements. So, we are ready to pursue the easement, to finish that out as far as... Be on the end next to making furniture, the mulligans section.
Bucks.
Bucks.
One other place that I know that we had talked about before, and we were doing Iowa Street and all the sidewalk repairs and stuff up through there, where we put in the new... It looked really nice, but I remember we put in the new rails and handrails and all that kind of stuff through there. The other end of Main Street down at Bryant Funeral Home, that section from there back to basically the courthouse annex, because there at Russell's office, you've got the steps and everything. We talked about doing something different in there with...
Yeah, ramp, because those stairs really make different...
Yeah, with the ramp and some handrails and some stuff like that.
Ramp and...
We had even talked to somebody about exactly how to do it, I mean, you know, what we were looking for, that sort of thing. And it kind of... That kind of fell through the cracks, too. That's been...
Wait a while.
Three years ago.
Yeah, Billy, we were working on that, and the plan was to go to the, make an annex building, you know, offset just a little bit and go straight across with a walkway to the building, and then build a ramp down, but to leave the steps, you know, redo the steps and put a rail up the steps.
Oh, you mean put a ramp down the side of the building?
But they're going to... In order to get the right slope, they were going to go just around the edge of the building there and cross the road, and then put a ramp up that way with the rails. Traffic's competing, but that was done and planned as part of that thing. We were doing that when we started putting rails back up on Main Street. Nobody had any way to... You know, the rails have been removed, and nobody had any way. So, we started putting some rails back up some of those stairs, so make it easier for people, and we just stopped on that part of it, and never really got it done.
I will dig that stuff back out, and I'll get with the sidewalk related on it. We'll try and get those projects back moving again. I know there's another barber and I talked about it a while out on Iowa Street.
It disappeared.
Basically disappears, and it's stuff that we need to fix. So, we will try to make some sidewalk issues a priority this year, too.
Well, it's got...
Safe place to touch the roof there, because the sidewalk is here. And it goes, there's a tree on it or something, I don't know.
And we have a spring issue there. We get numerous calls for a leaking water line there. We have tested the water, tested the water, dug it out, tested the water, and it's a wet weather spring that pops up around across the sidewalk.
We've had a little...
On Iowa Street down towards the...
It's a dangerous crisis.
Man, she... I'll tell you how old I am from her. Any other streets or sidewalks issues?
I appreciate it. It shows how much we need, though. We've had a long discussion. There's a lot of needs out there for the sidewalks and streets.
And more people are walking all the time, partly because of need. People don't have cars or exercise.
I will... Summer and I sat through that presentation on the sidewalk, folks. We will look at that again, and I will bring that back to you at the February meeting. And if we think that's something we want to proceed with, that's something I can actually do. We can fund that and go through with it. Town owned vacant properties. Let's start with the Old Town Hall, which is a decision we had at the last work session I was at. Obviously, we had one offer on Old Town Hall property, and folks aren't just really bidding our door down to take it off our hands. We have a couple of options on what to do with that at this point. We can keep doing what we're doing. We've got to advertise on the webpage. I have talked to Tommy Jenkins of LEDC, the push you'd ever chance to get to anybody. Any chance I get, I talk to somebody and tell them, "Hey, we've got this nice property for sale." And we can keep doing that. Or, if you want to, and you have a couple of options with those, you... At some point, we would have to pick one, if we can. We send the letter to the board of realtors, we guide it out to as many of them as we can, trying to be fair to everybody. Or, we could pick one and say, "You sell it for us," running the risk of alienating every other real estate agent in the vacant county. Or, we can go outside the county and pick a commercial broker, for instance, in Asheville, Haywood, somewhere that brokers from other properties around here, and see what they can do with it. Then we run the risk of alienating all of the real estate folks in the vacant county. And certainly, nothing we have to decide today, but I think we're open to some discussion on what our future is with that building, and how much we want to push with it, and what we want to do at this point.
We only free and clear, right? So, we can... And how much land is there that they're joining a lot?
Goes all the way through. It goes all the way through. We need to sell the building, but I tell you, it's just from what I see at work, there's just nothing out there right now. I mean, if we knew somebody from California that needed that building, fine, we'd probably sell it. Just...
Have we considered a lease?
We did have one inquiry about a lease, but it never materialized. I am a little hesitant about being in the leasing business, because you end up having to pay the taxes of the building.
Yeah, and then they tear it up, and then you got to go back in and fix it.
It would cost you more to get operational again and get it linked up than you got it back in two or three years, so...
I know, and I hate to say this, I'd rather, at least for a short term. And I'm not talking about years and years, but at least on the short term. I'd rather use it for storage. I'd rather have, you know, maybe let Jay keep a couple of backhoes out there, just in case it snows or something crazy like that. I mean, we can get some use out of it like that. I just... I'm just not seeing it anywhere, you know, about anybody buying it.
Could we paint it and make it more attractive, more appealing?
I don't think anything's going to do any good right now. I don't.
I think we need to paint it, because they use it for short-term and storage, that's not...
Yeah, no.
But we're trying to sell it. Make it cleaner.
But I mean, to me, if people, once they walk in there, to me, it's...
Well, but they're not... Anybody that's going to buy that for a commercial building is not going to really...
They're going to tear it out.
I would think they would just level it. I mean, I would.
And we've even talked... I know that some conversations have been had about going in and tearing all those sheds down in the back, you know, kind of cleaning it up, but you don't have any idea. I mean, somebody might want to buy it, that might actually not be a draw for them. I mean, you can't just, you know...
Well, one of the... An ideal place for a mechanic or some kind of...
One of the future problems that we'll have, and Jen and I have talked about it, is storage for us. We're going to have to have a place to store records and other things somewhere. We're running out of room here.
I've got storage units.
Who was that?
Sorry, I'm going to get a storage unit.
I don't think he said "yo."
That's what I'm trying to get him to give, and he said he has a storage unit, and I assumed it was burning.
You know, and I've...
Throw that in, it's very close.
I'm trying to think of other uses, are there other things? And I've got some feelers out there to different folks. What can we do to make it not vacant? I don't know any other word to say, but other than non-vacant. So, I will just, I guess at this point, we'll just keep doing what we're doing.
Well, maybe we should think about what we'd like to see there. I mean, that would be good for the town, because, you know, to get to town, you go like...
Well, what do you think, Barbara?
I don't know, but it should be something nice-looking and something that would...
Well, if we make it nice-looking and tear it down, just make something nice-looking, then we don't have... Then we've lost all our storage gear. And then Berlin opens...
Well, I wouldn't say tear it down, I'm just thinking...
Yeah.
If, you know, we had our druthers, what would...
Nothing ever came from the house next door, popping them out, maybe purchasing that other piece of property.
I haven't had any offers.
Okay, because they jumped out.
Yeah, I think part of those long properties is also part of our parking area now, so...
I know that, too.
But I mowed that yard for years and took care of it.
Well, kind of, and I guess let me go back for a second about what Barbara was saying. We certainly, to be able to sell that place, we certainly don't need to let it go downhill. I mean, I'm not... Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that. We need to go through, and if there's grass growing in the parking lot, we need to take care of that. You know, we need to keep it up. And yeah, if there's something that just, I mean, if the windows are peeling or if there's something down there, yeah, we need to...
Make it look old and unused, you know?
Don't go overboard, but keep it in distant condition.
Yeah, you don't want to, I mean, you know, that's...
Because a lot of deteriorating property in that part of town.
That's one of the things they say when you're trying to sell a house, you know? You try to make it... You don't paint one of the rooms pink, because nobody, you know, there may be one in a hundred like a pink room, so you kind of neutralize everything, you know, with stuff like that. And I feel the same way down there. You just need to kind of try to keep, to maintain at least what's gone.
Does anybody ever use any of it for parking? I mean, we talked about parking up there on Main Street in town, but I never see anything in there.
Well, the only time I've ever seen anything is if they have a festival or something. You know, looking for a place to park some, but most of the time, they go across from the funeral home, parking that somewhere. They don't even go down the hill, so...
It's kind of hard to get in and out of that.
And that's the biggest thing, when they talk about putting stuff there, it's dangerous. I mean, you come to...
It's why it's hard to do something with that building, just because it's in that curve, and it's difficult to get in and get out of that.
Well, the state had talked about doing something with the turn there. Big trucks came through, and what they were doing was riding up on that bank as they made the turn, both ways, I mean, coming in. And at one point, they came in and said, "Okay, we'll, you know, we'll do something to cut that bank off and kind of try to widen a little bit through there." That was years ago. And then nothing, they just didn't...
But right across from us, the bank spent all that money on grade and making that where the motel was stored at. Nice-looking, I don't think they've had any success selling that. That's been, what, two to three years now?
They've not had... As far as I know, they've not had...
You know, they spent a lot on that grading stuff.
Well, what did they decide to do about the traffic circle there at Wyatt Street?
I had that conversation with Wes, the grind staff, and Brian Burks about a week ago. It is still on the books, but they don't know.
That's going to take the Chamber of Commerce if they do that. That's going to take the Chamber of Commerce.
But I think they're looking at that for future relocation.
They've been talking about...
That for future plan, because it's in that winter plan.
They warned us one time to let them have it for free, so...
Oh, yeah, well, that's...
Yeah, I heard that.
That's happened, but I don't know if they want to pay. I got one of that free storage units.
Yeah, I heard.
Yeah, he heard.
He just ignored me. We could pay a dollar a year, Berlin.
Well, if that's the best offer I have, I'll let you have it.
At least at Trippicham, but not... Something that benefits them.
I will... We will try and maintain it so that we don't run afoul of our own usage orders, obviously.
We need to get some...
Standard.
Have the side ourselves.
Yes, they do.
There will be some progress, so we need to get some tax...
There's nobody hardly buying, you know?
There's not, I mean, not right now.
I'm like Billy, I think we need to just keep doing what we're doing for the time being.
The other, obviously, the vacant property that you own, the Whitmer property, and I will take my lumps from you all, but you all paid to have the asbestos inspection done. You had the house ready to be destroyed. Fire department did not get it burned back this past season. We've had a flood of those and just did not get it done. Honestly, I didn't push it too much, because we weren't really pushing to do anything with it. So, I promise you, as soon as possible, we will get that scheduled and get that taken care of. It may end up being summer-ish somewhere in that time, but we will get it removed. We just haven't done it.
You can't do it during winter because of water freezes, maybe?
We can, it's just the point of, you have to get it scheduled Southwestern. Say, labor nightmare, Joyce, we can only...
Better let them pay for it.
Honestly.
Oh, okay.
If Southwestern schedules it, and there's any insurance problems, and we damage anything, it's their insurance, not ours.
Okay. I didn't realize that's how it worked, okay.
For my folks, it's a little bit of a drain. It's a long day, it's a long process. We got to get other departments to come and help us. It's a... We can feasibly do about two a year and get some value out of it. When you start doing more than that, people get burnt out on it, and they just... The educational purpose goes out the door, and they're just tired of it when done. So, we have to kind of filter it in, but I promise you, we will... But I promise you, we will, I will stay on that, get there maybe.
Some of these guys will go in there and they'll clean all around it and make it accessible. A lot of poison oak back in there.
That's a big, our bush oak walnut.
Yeah, bush oak, some of the vines and stuff's cut back, so. We got rid of twenty-seven skids and rocks, so. There's definitely gonna be a lot of rock once up there, on those walls and stuff, once it's burnt, but...
All that copper went away.
Yeah.
Well, that's a pretty step.
That's it back in there, I mean, you can't see it.
Yeah.
Right now, it's nothing, but illegal stuff going on down there. I believe in somewhere, it all cleaned off and decided later what we're gonna do.
Well, don't you know, in its heyday, that was a fine piece of property up there on...
Oh, yeah.
Goodness gracious.
I will tell you that in the process, when we looked at the last range of projects we submitted to DOT for consideration. We, we did look on the master plan, and there was an access penciled into the master plan to get to that property from Crane Circle. That was, if that ever developed, maybe the town hall went there, whatever was gonna be done. Access was planned to come in off Crane Circle and come up the hill there through the field. Derek and I looked at it before he left, and we questioned DOT about the possibility of going ahead and planning that into that last range of projects. They essentially told us, no, number one, because they were only doing pedestrian and bike projects. But number two, they have conceptually decided that the Highlands Road will be what they call a boulevard. Because my, ideally, I would have seen a, a traffic, there's on plan, there's a traffic light there, an intersection going up the hill. If you can go into the Whitmer property, Crane Circle. However, if they do go with that boulevard concept for the Highlands Road area, and please don't ask me a lot of details about what that is, because I can tell you. But they, they don't do traffic lights. You don't have, you may have a roundabout, or you may have some other option, but they essentially trying to eliminate those traffic lights. So, we considered trying to develop that intersection and maybe see what we could do with that property. But, and make it either worth more to us or worth more to somebody else. But DOT basically told us, no, we don't need to do that. Any other questions or discussions on those?
Any other property we own as well?
Not that I'm aware of, it's fake. If I'm mistaken, am I missing?
I know we don't own this one, are we any closer or anything to owning the old gas station there by the old Ingles? As a fire department, any of the heirs, anybody talking to us even about?
We usually have a discussion.
Did we have a little lot, just a small piece of property? Oh, boy, now let me see where it's...
D and L parking lot?
Well, never one.
The D and L parking lot?
Yeah, we had D and L, but no, this one, this one, Jerry, can you hold your own? Kind of across the street from the church or something. Do we know where it's located?
I don't know if we ever saw that or not, as I'm telling you straight.
Yeah, I guess Jerry is also sure.
Seems like it was a little piece of property we'd have to check into.
Certainly.
That was like a well or something along.
Yeah, it was just a residential...
It was just not even even, I don't think a half acre. But at one time, then, we get rid of all those little pieces.
We, we had a discussion, but I don't remember whatever happened.
There was a property that was bought and sold, it was for...
It was like just maybe...
Water tanks and stuff like that.
It was like a fourth of an acre, it ain't even less. We'd have to look, I don't know really right off.
It seemed like there was an old well or something on it that we took out. I mean, you know, years and years ago, when town was made up of ten wells, this was one of them, and we just...
Because we used to have one out on Harrison Avenue, there's several, and on Wilkie Street. But I thought we cleaned that up, but I don't know, we'd have to check.
That's not a good project, Bernie, I think. We're making research, that's right.
We're making a list, checking it out.
We need something to do already.
Like there's not a list, crying out...
Any other, yeah, there's... Any other discussions on any of that? Number seven, economic development, and I really don't have a whole lot of information on this one. I guess, one of the things that I've been in contact with economic agents or the economic development commission to make sure, particularly when we have large buildings that are vacant, what can we do to get people in those? We don't think we'll do, to not have vacant structures. Obviously, we've still got one on Main Street that he and I discussed on a regular basis to get filled. And we have several of those scattered throughout the town, Franklin. We have done things over the years to try and facilitate that. There's a lot of, you know, you all do a retail market analysis, and there's at least one business in town that, that came to be because they looked at this retail market analysis and saw that supposedly there's a need for something. So, we've, we've done things like this, maybe not pushed it as much out to the public, but the public should have. We've tried to do that recently, but there are things available to folks that are looking to do business with the town. And we've done some, some legwork for them to say, "Here's, here's where the needs are." TDA has the tourism, marketing opportunities, there's some work done on the TDA as far as what's available, what's out there. So, and I tie, I reference the, the Main Street master plan and the streets master plan a lot as far as what, particularly infrastructure things we've, we've either got in mind or thought about or the comprehensive transportation plan that we've, we've worked on. I reference that a lot to folks when they question me about economic development, because infrastructure's important to those folks. They need to know we've got service, they need to know we got, they need to know that we're working on our sidewalks and our streets. They need to know that we've, we've looked at the town and that we've got a concept for how we want things to be in the future. I guess my question to you, is there anything else that, that maybe we're missing somewhere or something we need to be doing? What else, any other thoughts on what we need to do to develop these things?
I'm not really sure what we can do, but the one thing that I see that we are missing downtown is restaurant. A good restaurant, because I see people going to Clayton, Silva, Waynesville, because they have all that and we're losing those tax dollars. And it's, we're also losing that dinner time pool of people downtown. So I don't know what we can do to help facilitate getting a good restaurant downtown.
Good restaurant.
Other than just, you know, breaking the door out and down Franklin's good place to be.
How it's good to be doing one.
We've talked several times, almost...
Is it Allen's?
We kind of really looking at that one, those swap birds, you know? They really were looking at it.
Old Farmers Federation.
Can I sneak them?
We don't just love to take back that one.
Westerl Auto.
Westerl Auto.
All right, any other discussion on that? That's kind of everything. All right.
We have a, promoting the arts, creates a lot of buzz, I'm all about. David Hugs, I'm sitting next to him at a fundraiser one night, and he was telling me about a town in Montana he had visited where vacant buildings were used for art shows. Exciting, it was. Need to go talk to him some more and see how they might have done that, but, you know, maybe some ideas, you know, just kind of off the wall things like that. That would give Franklin a little more of a destination, a little bit more excitement. The main thing I hear from people is, it's not exciting. Someone was telling me, yes, four friends are planning to leave this year, and they are, they all have good jobs, but they wanna go where there's more stuff to do.
It's hard for us to create things to do. They need to be creative.
Create an atmosphere where things happen.
I don't know how many of you are familiar with Solid City. Now, Solid City had a couple of empty buildings that they converted to a arts and crafts incubator. And it's drawing people everywhere. I, I think what we're gonna have to do, I think that we're gonna have to stop thinking about, well, we're gonna, we're gonna draw good, high-paying, clean industry to Franklin. I think it's just like Billy was saying a while ago. Hunting, fishing, hiking, biking, all of these...
Second home?
Second home, well, yeah, exactly.
That's why, that's why the, for the second home, did it like come up?
Exactly, exactly. I, somebody told me the other day that we're getting all these high-tech businesses, and we're on the verge of being a regional medical center here. Believe it or not, we really do. But what do you do when doctors, husbands or wives don't have anything to do with it?
Yeah.
They don't want to know.
Happens a lot.
But we're not, I'm not gonna solve that, Derek, I just wanted to throw out that the gem mines were out of niche at one time. And I think they, I just don't think they draw...
Well, they used to have the Ruby, I remember growing up, the Ruby flying in.
Oh, yeah!
Oh, yes.
Yeah, for the gem shows and stuff.
I know.
Yeah.
When you go out of town, and if you tell them you're from Franklin, most people's been through here.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't say, "I know what draws them." They'll tell you, "I've been through Franklin, that's a beautiful town, and I really enjoyed myself."
I know, I'm, I'm talking about, the grass is always greener on those sides.
Right, yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, and Janet brings up a really good point, that I actually probably should have mentioned when we're talking about Main Street. When you come into Franklin from the south, if you miss the exit and you end up coming through downtown, we, you end up going through half the town. You actually miss half it because you're going down Backstreet. Or what I call Backstreet, I guess it's actually E. Martin. But yet, we try and focus folks on other areas, so maybe there's, you know, maybe we look at it somehow, trying to figure out how to refocus those folks. Studies will tell you that, that having one-way traffic on Main Streets or any streets will decrease your, your volume of incidental folks that come through and just say, "Oh, wow, I accidentally drove through here and saw something, I wanna stop." You'll have anywhere from a three-tenths of a percent to up to a one or two percent increase in walk-in customers to businesses that have just driven by and said, "Oh, that's a nice store, let's, let's stop." But I don't know how you do that, because with, the way we're laid out, I don't know how you do that here. And there's such an expense involved with, with trying to reroute those traffic patterns. And then you create pedestrian problems, because they've got two ways to have to look, and then you...
I think that's safer than crossing with somebody speeding in the other lane and you can't see them, and you think, you know, this person stopped for you. It happens, I mean, that's, you're crossing, this person stops, and you think it's safe, and there's someone who doesn't see you.
Flying in that lane.
So, I don't know.
We need a roundabout down on Backstreet, that would give us a problem.
Well, my suggestion was...
Roundabout, say, "See you, see you at the store in Franklin," and, you know, say, "Come for the..."
All the way around the simple civilian...
Just keep circling, just keep circling.
My suggestion was to reverse the traffic.
Everybody go...
Just come into town, come down Main Street, use Palmer Street as the one way back in the opposite direction, just reverse it.
Well, I think you...
Berlin's got a point, and why couldn't we not try it one weekend? Literally get the police to lock off, now Joyce, don't, don't... Help me out here, I'm trying to help you.
The state had a, the state had a problem with... Getting a cross over down there.
Well, we could, we could, we could block... I will be glad, volunteer, if you will take the other end of Main Street, I will take one end of the street.
No, I'll stand next to you, you're in the front of me, so you can get the first car.
I'm serious about that.
I, I hear what you're saying.
Literally try.
It really isn't a bad idea.
Particularly during the winter.
It was getting the tidying down by the bridge, that was the problem.
Well, I was totally against closing Main Street, and I was proven way wrong, so. We never thought we could close Main Street for years.
Well, I think the issue with the two-way traffic is something we still need to, need to look at. I mean, if you look at all the studies that's been done around Franklin for the last several years, they talk about that fact that people coming from one side, coming from the south, miss Main Street. They, they never get into that, so I'm not necessarily for the, for going back to two-way traffic, but then that's an issue I think we still need to, we need to look at. I just have a hard time figuring out how you would go back to two-way traffic on that.
I don't know that I even wanna go there.
Yeah.
But there may be a way that we could set up signage, there may be a way...
Yeah, that's what I was...
Can do some little torques here and there, you know, that, that would, you know, that would bring people, get some people like...
Coming up Patnep, you turn here to circle through Franklin or something like that.
If you go out, if you go down the Georgia Road and you stop there at the intersection, where you're talking about where you could go on around town, and you, you miss it and you come through town, well, have mercy, ninety-five percent of the cars just go whoosh, and you know where they're headed? I mean...
Casino.
Yeah, go to casino.
They, they know where they're going. I mean, it's not that they're guessing and, "Oh, I missed, I'm sorry, I missed Franklin." No, they intended to. So, you know, maybe there's a way that if they do get in town, we can pull them around.
Yeah, that's gonna be an awful busy area down in town. There's wrecks there almost every day now.
And when I talk about East Palmer, I no means think that's a bad neighborhood, but what traditionally happens is you have, you have service business. You have drag software, you have the income tax folks, you have insurance agents, you don't have retail shops. We have a retail area and we have a service area, and most of us folks will go through the service area. They don't, they're not gonna stop, so, "Well, I need to buy a life insurance policy."
Oh, that reminds me, I don't have any insurance.
You know, we have, we have a lot of unique stores on Main Street, and it's sad that, that we miss out on fixing some of the traffic that comes to Franklin because they don't get to see it, so.
We presented it to DOT for the two-way, and did they ever come back with a survey or whatever?
I don't know that they did, but, but I'm pretty sure what you will get out of this survey that you'll get back in a couple of weeks is that they'll still recommend two-way traffic with, with pedestrian controlled areas. Maybe you have a bump out, so you come out and you're not darting across the sidewalk, parking space, one lane, one-lane parking place. That their big concern with two-way traffic is now, when I exit into two-way traffic, I have to, I understand what you're saying about the, the two lanes of traffic and dodges those, but when you come out into bidirectional traffic, you have to clear this intersection, then you gotta clear this intersection, you've got a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty degrees sweep to actually clear the intersection. Not to mention the expense of the traffic line.
We just need to educate our drivers to stop pedestrians somehow or another, or mark those crossings better or something.
Well, they know it like going through into Georgia, they know they're gonna get a ticket.
You know, I...
If you don't stop for pedestrian, you, but you get stopped, you, if you don't stop for the pedestrian, they know they're gonna get hit.
Well, you still hear, everybody did.
I always stop for people, I mean, if I see them, I always stop, I don't ever try, I don't know that it's...
Well, I hate to say it, I mean, these cars sail by me. Instead, they're waiting across, you know, they don't even notice that.
So, if we ever do anything on Main Street to, you know, pay for something, boy, I would love for us to extend our brick sidewalk program. Have you ever been down to Westminster, South Carolina, just how nice it is down there? All of your crosswalks are actually the stat brick through there. It really shows up, looks nice.
What are those things called, Carol, where you go up a little bit, flatten out, and go back down the other side?
Speed bumps?
Well, it's, it's sort of like the speed bump, but it's traffic calming or something, and they're walkways.
Yeah.
That would go a long way on Main Street. Joyce, I left something in your box about those, some company that, that does that, to few streets.
I would like to continue that program, and all of our sidewalks actually to be like bricks. We just have a problem on South Side, just go, brother.
Oh, but we don't know anything.
But share, I want you to share.
We don't know, but, yeah.
But, you know, while we're talking too, one thing that I'd like to see us do, I don't know, but we've got four museums basically on Main Street. I would like to see some of our different organizations, like the TDA and all that, investing some into capital improvements of some of these things that actually draw the people to Franklin. You know, we do a lot of advertising, but if we could pull some of that advertising dollars back into improving the things that people come here, I, I think we would have some return there, also.
What are you saying about improving the outside, the outside appearance or what?
Sure, well, let me give you an example, is the historical museums trying to renovate that third floor of the old Puntgrass building. Money's just been a huge problem. Money's just been a huge problem, but it's amazing. That's just an idea, I just, it's something we might want to look at someday.
I think if there's no more discussion on that, money leads me into number eight.
Have fun.
Number eight, with our budget priorities.
Right.
Basically, let me recap very, very quickly, the audit that you all were present with back at the last meeting, and sometimes you get the information, but it, it's better when I sit around the table and tell you a few of the things that opposed you listening to the auditor, and Janet obviously can answer any of these questions and make them up, but you improved drastically from two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen when you compare your revenues versus your expenditures. In two thousand and twelve, your, your expenditures exceeded your revenues by roughly four hundred thousand dollars. In two thousand thirteen, your, let's say that right, your expenditures exceeded your revenues in two thousand twelve. In two thousand thirteen, your revenues exceeded your expenditures by about fifty, sixty thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. Overall, your total fund balance went up about seventy-eight thousand dollars this past fiscal year. If you take out the stabilization, which is required for state statute, which is a percentage that you have to have in there to, to main, to be fiscally responsible, and have your one month's worth of operating expenditures, fund balance actually increased sixty-six thousand dollars. That actually gives you a, if you calculate out the percentages, then you basically have fifty-two percent of your, your general fund balance. The available fund balance as a percent of your expenditures for the general fund is fifty-two percent, up to forty-five percent last year. That's a significant improvement.
What's the number?
Total number is.
And the general fund balance?
One point eight million, one million eight hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, and that's after the stabilization money is taken out of consideration.
That's after.
Yeah, you've actually got two million, ten thousand dollars in there, but you subtract a hundred and fourteen thousand, sixty-six dollars, because that's what's required for sta, stabilization, so truly available to you is one point eight. Obviously, we don't want to go out and spend that much.
I felt like I wanted to.
That's why I stated, Joyce.
Do we have any, any increased long-term loans that will take effect this year that we didn't have on here?
We'll have an increase in that.
What about the, we're going to kick in the sewer plant expansion.
Okay. Now, the good thing with that being said is when you look at the, the water and sewer this year, last year you showed a net loss of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the sewer and water enterprise fund. This year, you're showing a, a net profit or income of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so everybody thinks that that's a cash flush thing, but, but that money's going to have to go to pay off that debt service that she's talking about, so.
About that increase.
However, that, that's much better than being on the negative side and knowing we've got this debt going due, so we're actually pretty good shape financially, we, we still need to be cautious with the sewer and water. We've, we've got to make sure we plan appropriately for the future to fund any of these other improvements we've got coming up. One of the other interesting things that, that I, I think people don't really understand, if you look at how our expenditures are divided, essentially you have public safety, general government, planning and economic development, and your other expenses. Of all of that, we spent fifty-seven percent on public safety, so a, a huge portion of what we bring in goes back to the public, it's not used for general government expenses. If you have general government expenses, which are, it's me, you're paying me to be here to do this paperwork and other folks to do that, you, you don't want a huge portion of your fund to go to managing organization and very little going back to the public, so I think that speaks very highly of the town of Franklin, that you're, you're returning that back to folks. Ten percent's planning and economic development, where we're about half of what we spend on making the government run, the general, the general government, we put back into the public for economic development and trying to help them get in a better situation, and fifteen percent's the other miscellaneous expenses we have, so I think that says a lot for us, for being fiscally responsible, to make sure our money comes in, we take care of it, we get it back to the people, we don't just use it to, to pay a bunch of high-paid folks here in the building to do paper. And then, are there any questions about that, anything financial-wise that perhaps we can answer today before I talk about one other thing with the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
What's in the enterprise fund right now? How much we owe them?
That would be, he's, he wants this number correct, Janet.
Yeah, it's down to two hundred and sixty thousand, but that was because that loan was still out. Okay, and we're, we're still to be repaid for part of it. And that was repaid in July. We got like two million something back, I won't say two million four.
So, that'll be in July of this year?
Yeah, we got it in July of twenty thirteen.
Oh, okay.
So, we're back, so we're probably over two million in that fund.
But I asked what the enterprise fund is.
Enterprise fund is a section of the general, of the budget that, that's essentially separate, which it has revenue and expenditures, it generates its own revenue, it, it's separate from your general fund, water.
Water and sewer, okay.
You, you kind of have two, you, you have the general fund budget, which is your taxes, your licenses, your fees, stuff that comes in for that, which is police, planning, folks like that. You have water and sewer, which generates revenue from those, and then expenditures are tracked and, and it's its own separate budget. And then, in a way, you have a hybrid with the fire, because you have a service fee money that comes in from the county, and then it's supplemented by the town from the general fund budgets.
But that gets, when you look at your audit, your fire department gets put back into the general fund and report, so that part.
Sewer and water is, on the audit, is the only tri-.
So, far as that reserve and our general funds actually make, it's moved to the fire department, if you don't give it to the fire department.
Okay.
You use everything else.
And then, on the water and sewer fund, any type of enterprise fund, you're supposed to actually be trying to make a profit. You're supposed to run that like a business, right? And when we're in the hole, that's not good.
And, and I don't know if all of you heard exactly what Janet was talking about, but if you look at the cash we have on hand for water and sewer operating income from two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, on the slides that they presented, it went from three million to two hundred and sixty-two thousand, which looks like something terrible happened. But what happened is we're, we're building the, we're, we're doing the sewer plant improvements, we have to pay those bills, and then we get the money back through the loan process and a million dollar grant, well, this is a snapshot, this is a one-day snapshot of where we're at financially, because those numbers change day to day to day to day. This snapshot, we had, we had paid out, and we hadn't got the reimbursement back from the loan, and we haven't got the reimbursement back, grant back from the grant yet, so those dollars improved drastically already, and we've got some more still coming in from the grant process, so that, that will actually drive that number back.
And a last question before we move on, how much have we got hanging around? About six hundred thousand.
Now, that's the more we get.
Well, it was six hundred, so now it's probably closer to seven hundred. And that's the one that, well, in the last session, they talked about taking that back away, you know, the state controls those type of funds, and they do that to payments now, and they talked about it the last session, that maybe they need to keep that for themselves, but if that happens, it takes everybody over to North Carolina, so I don't know if that ever get pasted or not, but you know, stranger things happen. Well, I mean, I'm not saying ugly, but we'd lose a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so if you want to still continue to do repaving in your streets and some of it, you'd have to come up with tax dollars.
And, and that whole funding formula, the, the funding formula technically was supposed to stay basically the same, so that we would end up with our same share of money, however, the method by which the money was inputted into that program changed. It used to be kind of a direct draw based on the, the gas taxes, whatever, well, now the state handles that money and then puts it into the program. So, as long as the input stays the same, it filters through all of the rockets and the wheels and the sheets and the ladders, and it comes out the same to us, however, if they modify the input and they don't put as much in the funnel at the top, it changes, so.
You know, Warren, we had to fill out that, you know, about the street miles, they asked for a form, it was what, in November, December, and they said that the state was looking at that, they won't know how many street miles we have, that's how that's partly based on how much money you get. Well, they want, they want us to fill out a form and send that in, which that's unusual, that's not a form you fill out every year, so see, they're studying that still.
And, and the, what they were asking for was, was like Charlotte or Raleigh, you have four of your streets, then perhaps you might be getting more.
See, ours will make the sign, because ours is, you know, like the little residential model.
We don't have any.
Say, so.
Okay.
That's where the money comes out, that's where the money goes.
See, they're looking at that, because otherwise they wouldn't have had everybody fill out that report. They're still looking at that closely.
And I guess that leads me into my last comment, we're actually, I'm running well on my schedule.
Yeah, totally fine.
Like I said, last year, I didn't have a whole lot of time to have a, a lot of discussions, had a time with you as part of your budget, and we basically developed a budget that kept us, we hit a couple of projects that needed to be done, we pretty much kept ourselves on par with where we were, and we maintained, and we, we did a budget which worked out well so far. However, this process will start very soon, we, we need to start, I need to start on my end, the process of developing a budget for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in March and April. Janet and I need to have that, some of the details mailed out into May, and it needs to get to you the first of June to have a budget passed already to go first of July. It helps me, it helps her, helps us understand if we know where your priorities are, because there's always going to be more need for money than what the money's earned. We need to be, we need input from you, we, you know, what, what do you want to do with the town? If you want to keep the tax rate the same, I can pretty much tell you exactly what the money's going to be, this is what it is, you haven't messed with them in years, but if there are other things that, that are, that are, that need to be done, or other issues need to be addressed, we need to be working on those now. We need to be prepared to educate the public on what we want to do, and if you stay the same, that's fine, if you have other things that you see need to be done, we, we have an obligation, nobody wants to raise taxes, everybody wants to keep taxes the same, I understand that, that makes my job easier, makes everybody else's job easier. Janet and I can probably rub a budget out and make you copy of last year's, we're good to go.
We're good to go.
However, sometimes we have to make tough decisions, and if you want the town to grow and there are things that need to be done and they require money, there's not a lot of other options to get it. However, if we're going to do that, and it has to come about, we need to educate the public now, they need to know, they need to understand, they need to be involved in the process, and we need to work it through the system. So, I guess my, my last comment is for you to be thinking about the options, the things that you may want to see, think about the associated costs of those, and we need to weigh the benefits versus the costs and decide whether they're worthwhile, or where we go from here.
And we completed the increase plan for the water sewer, I know we did one, one year and one the next year, do we have any other following, I know we split that out over several years.
We finished, we finished what you started, when, two years ago, we finished what you started. However, this, we will have to look at this financial analysis, they look at the rates and look at, for instance, if they say we need to do two million dollars more debt in the next two years, what it'll take to get us there, calculating in the sewer debt that we've incurred, and calculating what may or may not be paid off between now and then. We, we may have some different recommendations to you about those adjustments.
Well, now, we did, we did implement a new kind of rate structure and did it over a, girl, in a two-year period that we did?
Well, we did it over two, I think, one, one year and then phased the other in.
And the second year.
Last year, I think, was the second phase.
And, and I know that McGill's over the years have said that they felt like our rates were too low, that, through the whole time, that we should be raising rates, and I know we did this, so when they look at it, at least it should show a little improvement over where they were at before.
And thank goodness that you all did that, because if not, you showed a three hundred thousand dollar net loss on water and sewer last year, it would be a tough chunk to have to pay if we're, if we've got a debt service coming to do this year on sewer plant improvement, and we're showing a three hundred thousand dollar net loss on what we've already got in sewer and water, so thank goodness somebody would implemented that to get that in the process, or we would be in a financial situation as you're in.
Have you had any complaints from people that, that increase in the water price? Every time I pay mine, I think to myself.
Joyce, Joyce.
Just saying.
Joyce, we can't count you.
I stopped and do it at our meeting.
All I can say is go somewhere else, see how much you're paying.
Outside of town, yeah.
Which folks are really, is folks outside the city limits.
Yeah.
That, that really pay you in the.
Are they? I'll talk.
You've got to be careful that we don't get a mass complaint.
But there has to be that, you have to find a middle ground somewhere, you have to figure out where that is, and the problem is when you, when you do raise rates, if I'm not mistaken, there's about a ten percent drop in usage, so you think that you're going to bump your rates up and you're going to generate all this income, but then people say, I'm not going water in my garden, so.
That is your capacity.
So, the difference is not much.
Controverse.
You have to take all that into consideration when you deal with it. I will tell you that we, we have folks that, every week, we have issues with folks that have trouble finding their details, we, we are not immune to anybody else now.
It's my primary.
I'm sure there are other issues out there.
Oh, yeah, sure.
But you, one of the things you, you definitely want, there's a few things you want, to be comfortable, you want the lights to come on when you flip the light switch, you want the water to come out as big.
That's why I live in town.
You want the water to go away when you want it to go away. So, I guess, perhaps we'll have another budget, we, we will have another budget work session, I'm sure, between now and budget time, but there, there may need to be some other talk within there about projects, issues, concerns, general direction on where you want us to go with the budget.
Warren, do we have any idea what percentage of properties, commercial properties are vacant and, and square footage and?
No, but you can ask that to the EDC first, you know.
The EDC, they know.
Oh, yeah. We've got a meeting first, you know.
Gosh, I've got four meetings, that might one of them. It gets F like it's gonna be a zoo sometimes.
You're gonna have to send your twin.
Yeah.
Well, let's, uh, let's jump around the table here and hear what's on everybody's mind. Carol, I'm sure I see the wheels turning.
No, I'm pretty well, pretty well satisfied with that, I think that there's gonna, we're gonna have to look at some work, I'm one of the things that I'm going to look into between now and budget, or meet again, so. Public safety, what improvements and stuff could be made, we'll be looking at that for the next couple of years.
I don't know of any big ticket, I understand, do you?
No, nothing more than, I would like to see us, because of the, the number of calls that the fire department is standing, we're on a, we're on an eighteen-hour shift, seven days a week, but I'd like to see us go to twenty-four pretty soon, and, you know, that amount of the income for that is supplied right now with no city tax money in it, so it's all county tax money, which city taxpayers pay. But that's something that we need to look at, because we have the option on that to ask for a small couple of tins of a penny increase there to, to go to a twenty-four hour coverage.
One quick question, I don't know if the board's aware, do you have percentage of how many calls or first responder calls?
Yes.
That's pretty high, isn't it?
Seventy-five, eighty percent.
Yeah, this year we bumped right around seventy percent, but volume-wise, like, the total volume this year is fourteen hundred and sixty-seven, which was up ninety-eight off the last year rate.
We're increasing. So, we are increasing.
Yeah, we're, we've been increasing steadily for the last three years, it's just jumped around a thousand, eleven hundred, and then we go to twelve fifty, and then thirteen eighty, and now we're up almost fifty dollars called.
Do we get any monetary help from any of those? Those first responder calls, from any body?
No, we don't, we don't build anything separate for that. You do have the option for, like, structural fires and vehicle wrecks, if you wanted to build insurance companies, you could, there's money set aside in there to pay fire departments for their response, in the past, we never have, since the, you know, the fire and rescue is funded by the fire service fee tax that comes through the county.
You see my wheels turning?
I looked, I didn't see anything.
Did you see that smoke coming out of it?
I wondered where we stood, for quite a while, we talked about the flood plain and flood wherever, and are we sitting anywhere and making a decision? We were going back and having new maps, we were, they were all. We were going back and having new maps, we were, they were all wrong, they were all... I hear a lot of people who would like to be able to have flood insurance, but first it has to be settled, and we have to have... I just kinda wondered where, if anything, or it's just been quietly forgotten and nobody wants it back into the thing, just...
Did we, we asked them to redo the maps, but I don't think...
I don't think we've ever done anything that...
I think they just stopped.
They stayed real quiet, yeah.
Took a backup, and the last I heard, that they said they were gonna redo all the maps.
I think the state withdrew all that money, you know, because they had steep slope programs, all that that was going on. I think all that was pulled back from the state, and they withdrew all that money from those projects, from the last I heard.
Isn't it sort of nation-wide? Because they aren't the only ones that...
No, it was, it was a, it was a national trend and a state trend on that, and that's where a lot of that money that Warren got before, where we did all those studies because of the slides and stuff that we had up in the Peak Street area.
But we only had, only had the best of my recollection, that we only had about four or five people who really wanted flood insurance.
Who wanted it? We know there were quite a few cases where those businesses said it wanted.
And a lot of folks did not.
It limits the use of the property, and once you go to that, then you get there, and then you limit it on what you put in there now.
I think the state kinda tied our hands, I mean, because they gave us the long...
I just wondered where it stood or if it was a dead-in-the...
One lady that really gripped about it, lived up in one of those river bend estates. She was looking down on Lake Emery, you know, by a few hundred feet. When I looked it up...
And she was with flood...
Yeah, she wanted the flood insurance.
We had that, we don't need to worry if it was that big.
Joyce, you got anything else? Barbara?
One idea that somebody brought to me, they said had worked very well in other communities where they live, is a revolving loan fund that the town set up. It was taking a small piece of the tax for the nice, for businesses and property owners who are willing to improve their properties to art standards, whatever, you know, design standards or whatever. And so, I just thought I'd throw that out there. I know money's hard to come by, and it's hard to get loans from other businesses.
There's a lot of towns, cities in North Carolina that have programs for that, where they have, when new businesses just get off the ground. So, that's something that is normal in a lot of different areas.
Two or three percent interest rate. Then the money would go back in as they paid the loan off to the fund, so it's not an expenditure, but it would be, could possibly be a big help. If you're asking people to fix up according to a master plan, you want...
Get all the look...
You want, yeah.
Well, that's been done with the new zoning, and of course, existing businesses do not, you know, they can grandfather in, but if the towns have provided a fund there, if they want to upgrade the system with it, to bring it into compliance, because it's always a benefit to the towns to do that.
It is, and if we didn't increase the value of the property.
Yes.
So, there might be something that we could do to help businesses that really wouldn't cost us anything, except that we didn't have the money to set aside and fund.
Thank you, Barbara. Okay?
I'm processing, so...
We'll come back.
One question, one question I had of, when we were talking about water. Have we looked at an online payment system for water bills?
We haven't, I think it's perhaps been looked at in the past, there's some issues with it costs more to do that. Janet, if I'm wrong, there were some charges with us, it would cost us more to process it than, well, again, the logistics of it, but I'm sure we can probably...
Seven percent, it's about seven percent.
But usually, I think what most towns do is you offer that. I know I went online with my taxes.
No, they usually...
They somehow charge the, they charge the customer, if you pay your taxes online, you have to pay the processing fee, I think.
So, I don't know when I pay my...
Same way the county taxes does.
My insurance payments, that's what it is.
Pay by credit card, you pay this number, you pay with a check, it's this amount.
If you utilize it like the county does, a third party that actually collects that money for you.
But we can certainly look at it and see if there's...
Because with everything so electronic nowadays, a lot of people probably pay everything online.
Anything else? Anything else? All right, okay. Billy? Ms. Merlin?
I got one thing. How's our tax collections coming?
The percentages are in front of me. Last year, it was ninety-seven something. Actually, I think that number's in the audit, but I don't have it in that paperwork I brought.
The reason, the reason I ask that question, somebody said something about Walmart the other day. So, I looked up Walmart, and, you know, you can't tell about the town, but the county tax, it looked to me like they had not paid anything since they relocated in two years. And I just wondered if they owe the town.
I don't know, Veronica, I'd have to look at that individually. I do know that we do pursue taxes very diligently from folks. I can't explain that, but I'd have to have Jessica come up to you and explain part of that process to you.
Well, she would know if that one is the one.
Well, and she's there, yes, right.
But I don't have anything else. I think we've covered a lot.
Yeah, we have. Some?
No, sir.
Janet? All right, now, I, see, we've got about an hour or so.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, here we go.
Couple of things, an observation. This has been an outstanding meeting, and I wouldn't mind if we did it twice again. Wouldn't necessarily have to be on a Saturday. Particularly, if it's a really nice Saturday, I'd rather be somewhere else, but we might could do it at night sometime, just set aside. I mean, this has been great. Region A meeting, if any of you wanna go, it's, let's see here.
Monday night?
I got it right here. It is Monday, January the twenty-seventh. If you wanna go, we need to make, we need to make reservations. Chancellor Belcher is gonna be the speaker that night, so if you got any questions for him, which I think... The essentials, there's still a couple of openings at the essentials in Hickory, and I can honestly say I've been to a lot of essentials, and this was the best one I have ever seen. It was absolutely outstanding. Grants, I met with Ellen McKinnon, who is with Martin McGill, and we started looking, and I am, I was really pretty discouraged that there weren't any grants out there anymore, but after we got to looking, there are quite a few grants that the towns may want to consider looking at sometime in the future, particularly about parks and recreation, conservation, cultural, inheritings thing. Some of that money is still out there. What we're hurting on seems to be the community development block grants, which we've relied on so much. The opt-in, opt-in is that Regional Joyce and I have been to it, Barbie, you went to it. They're having another Regional Vision Workshop on Thursday, February the sixth, and this one's gonna be at Tartan Hall. New books, I've asked Summer to order. David Lawrence has put out the most concise, the best book I've seen yet for council members and mayors. This is an excellent book, and we all got some in Asheville the other day, but I've ordered one for all the council members. It is, it dates back... It's the handbook for North Carolina mayors and council members. It's part of the Local Government Board Building Series. And this one's the brand-new one, off the press this year, twenty thirteen. That really seems to be all I have, unless somebody's guys, they can go and say, yes, you may, certainly. Oh, yes. Here we go.
I don't know, I mean, this is off the wall, but we're aldermen, and I have had so many people ask me, what is an alderman? I mean, people just don't even know what it is, and that's when we were at the, you know, commissioner's, but...
Allen's.
Yeah. But, you know, I don't even know what the word alderman, I guess it came from elder statespeople or something, I don't know.
That wouldn't apply here.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
I saw you that ruined your eyes.
All women sounds particularly awful. But just to think about, you know, maybe we could change, it doesn't change the structure or anything, it's just the name.
Well, people ask me when we first came on, oh, my God, should I call? I said, I don't care, you know, I'm still, I'm still, you know, elected official. To me, I like it, but...
That charter.
Yeah, I don't mind, yeah. I don't mind the state alderman, I mean, I think it makes us a little more unique.
An alderman is a town council member, that's just the word. There's no such thing as an alderwoman. It's alderman.
That's it.
I told them they didn't have to, I wasn't threatened by being called an alderwoman.
You mentioned something there, and I think this is something we're gonna have to face eventually. We're gonna have to look at our rules and procedures and our ordinances. We were going back through something the other day, and it basically has never said the term of office of mayor. We've just got to get some of this stuff worked out because...
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, we talked about, when we got these tablets, we talked about, one of the things was they were gonna drop down all the ordinances where we could look at them from time to time when people had questions, and we haven't done that yet. I'd like, if we don't, can't get it on the tablet, I would definitely like to get copies of it.
A great example of that was the one about the pool holes, which you had to have permission of your parents.
Yeah, that was ridiculous.
Oh, I mean, come on. But that is something I think that eventually...
Blowing your horn while driving through town.
What's that?
Blowing your horn while driving through town.
Well, Janet, has anybody paid you a dollar for their dog lately?
No, they...
But it's on there lately. What are you rolling your eyes about, Warren? I know it.
He's getting ahead of him.
What is it for a cat, fifty cents?
Well, two dollars. I have to delegate that down to a board member each week or something.
Is it still illegal to ride your horse on the sidewalk?
Probably, probably sit there.
I don't know, but if it's not, maybe it should be, yeah. Anybody else got anything? Warren, you got anything else, sir? All right, okay, guys, if that's it, let's... How about the fourth estate, y'all all right? Good, okay, good deal. All right, I guess we're adjourned. Well, I don't know if we're adjourned, but we're going, go home.
Everybody go their separate way.
We're going home. Thanks, guys.
Basketball game at three.
Appreciate everything.